I gotta look in my.
Here's a, you know.
It seems to be selectively.
Well, she went, that one went to spam for me too.
Well, the hotel is free and the meals are free.
To spam.
Happened to me once, they gave me, there's no questions asked, I just, you know. I was canceled, they said here's a ticket for the hotel and here's a voucher for dinner and rent.
No, did you? Okay, well good, I'm glad I'm at the least. So.
No, it's not approved. Second and fourth Wednesday.
It's on my calendar, it's on my.
I scheduled my vacations on this.
It, it, um. Oh my gosh, I was gonna say.
Doesn't always work, but.
I, uh.
Yep.
Did, well, yeah, this year, I'll only miss the July.
Okay.
So that's good, yeah.
Seven o'clock. Okay. Yep, thumbs up. So. Any citizens' comments this evening?
Other than the fact is, I'm just curious about when you, when you anticipate on looking at that zoning bylaw changes, the list that was put out about two years ago?
Uh, actually, I'm working on it. I was talking to the building inspector and he's got a couple of issues that he wants to be addressed or at least reviewed and he's doing a little research to come up with some ideas.
I think we had a couple of issues in the last, a couple of, last few months with, you know, some of the zoning bylaws, the interpretation, we just need to make sure that we can, you know, resolve those issues.
Yes, have you sent an email to write those down to us, so we have it?
No, it's the ones that were on that list that was put out about two years ago.
From two years ago, right.
So are we talking bylaw revisions that?
Yeah, existing bylaws, I have it in, on my computer, but I don't know if I have it here. But it's something that went out a while ago.
Yeah, okay.
So.
It's two years.
He's on it.
Thank you.
Um. Old Business, Finders Pub, I didn't hear back from them, so. Finders Pub. Old Business, Finders Pub. Did you have something to, to say before?
I wasn't sure if we, no, no?
Okay. So I have no update on the status of that?
Nothing, okay, because supposedly they got their, um. Liquor license approved.
Right, right.
Was that one that you were gonna send a, an email on to, and no response or?
Uh, yeah, it was this week though, so.
Okay, but you sent one, okay.
I sent one, and I copied, I copied Nancy on it, so.
Good.
Just wondering what the status was, so.
All right.
Village Center zoning update, once again, I failed to send you my, my changes and of course, I had some sheets printed out with my changes on them and they're at work, so how do you like that? Oh, yeah, the world's biggest violin, so.
Yep, yep.
Is this, okay.
This is a version that I just.
This is the one that you sent out a while back?
No, this is the one I sent out just February fifth.
Right.
So it's not the one that was sent out earlier, this is different. I tried to incorporate a whole bunch of the things that the board was discussing that hadn't been updated in the prior one. I changed some of the purpose stuff, some of the, uh, distinct bulleted items on the first page, and then I started looking at some of these on the second page, the use provisions.
A lot of yellow here.
Yeah, it was.
Are those things that you changed or that you have questions about?
Both.
Okay.
Things that I wanted a little more feedback, so we had added in to the idea of single-family housing, which makes sense, but then multifamily housing, we're okay with, there was a question in there, or there was two different kinds, there was rental units and ownership units. Is there, why is there a difference between rental and ownership? Is there a purpose for that or an intention, anyone knows?
Just a time.
Yeah.
With the idea that.
Cause like number three and number four talks about. Ownership or rental ownership stuff and then number four was rental, cause they kinda wanted more rental units.
The only thing I can think of is that if you have a, a two-family house, the downstairs where the owner's unit may be bigger and the rental area might be smaller, but I don't know, other than that, I can't see why it would be different.
Or do they, or do they mean that, like, they want them to be, like, condo units, like, owned?
Well, no, we, we allow multifamily ownership in here.
Okay.
And we allowed it both as rental and as ownership, so it could be either one.
Okay.
They had things stipulated in each one, I don't know why that we need to worry about it. I mean, it's e- either the owner lives there or someone's renting that lives there, it doesn't really matter to me too much.
Unless, yeah, unless CMRPC could say, in our experience, here's the reason, I can't think of one.
And that's, and I wanted to get feedback from you folks and then I'm gonna send this off to Eli at CMRPC.
Okay.
So those were the, that was kinda the big thing there and then there was number three that, uh, talked about non-residential, encouraging non-residential units, is what number twenty-six says, so I wasn't sure why it was in there twice, or. Mixed-use facilities are encouraged.
Oh. Hmm. Did this list of twenty-seven come from the original document?
Yep.
Oh, okay, so it's nothing that we changed along the way?
Right.
Okay, looks like a.
But then we talked.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, it seems like we can cut it out, but then the idea of it's a mixed use, so it's residential and business, but like I said in that comment on twenty-six, what happens on Saturdays when business is open for half a day or most of the day Saturday and the people are home on Saturday. So do we, if we're gonna do shared parking, that's not gonna work. So we need to at least be aware.
It'll be the same thing that happens every weekend through town, like, the traffic is sort of reasonable and understandable through town and then for some reason on Saturday and Sunday, it's just incredible. You can't turn left onto Main Street.
People wanna work.
Main Street?
Oh, whatever.
West Paulson Street.
Yeah, West Paulson Street. I mean, it's just, it's, it's just, like, you just roll with it, but, but it's, I don't understand it.
But that's traffic, that's where traffic works, but, yeah, so we, I wanted to just be aware in this bylaw so that we're ready and we're not gonna create a situation that's not gonna work.
Agreed. Yep.
And then I went down, um. Oh, I didn't print that out, sorry. I did a spreadsheet on number five, it talks about retail uses limited in size to no greater than five thousand, which is what we talked about the last time, cause they started at ten thousand, but we talked last time about five thousand, so I left that in. But do we wanna make it an, an area per acre of land area, so if you have a small lot.
It's a small store?
It's a smaller retail space.
It's a small store, right, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely makes sense.
So it would make sense, so what I did was I looked at, uh, about ten of the properties in town. And did an retail space per acre of lot calculation. Some of them came out to like twenty-two thousand, which was the Darby's property. It's a small lot.
Yep.
A lot of retail. And others came out more sparse, like, what you said, Liquors, came out to about five thousand square feet per acre, same thing with Webster, Federal Credit Union.
How much, how, how much land does what you said Liquors have?
Uh, I think an acre.
But five thousand per acre is what, like, twenty-five percent? No, twelve percent. Five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-three, twelve.
Eight times five is forty, so it's eight times, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, so that's a five thousand square foot building, you think?
On an acre of lot.
There's an idea of how, you know, in case somebody wonders what, how big is a five thousand square foot building?
Right, and those are the examples, like.
Yeah.
The, pretty much all the banks in town, Webster, Clinton, um, United, cause they're in the mall, um, but most of those standalone banks are all about five thousand square feet on an acre of land. So it gives a, gives an idea of what's going on, I also looked at, oh, what did I do, Miola's Package Store, I just pulled a couple because I clicked on it and it came up and I got the information off the town's GIS. And I'm not sure whether we wanna do, uh, five thousand or three thousand square feet, but that's a detail we can work out, but the idea of doing it by gross floor area per acre of lot.
Makes sense.
I think that's sensible.
So, okay, so we'll go with that.
Do you wanna, in, in that same part of the bylaw, do something about, um. It, it may be smaller due to frontage requirements and, and, um, that sort of thing, like, they might not be able to fit that on there if, like, when it's bordering a residential, it needs fifty feet of frontage or whatever it is.
Yeah, that's the maximum.
That's a maximum.
It'll be no greater than, that's why I would do that.
But I would, I would like to have something in the same place in the bylaw that, so that people read it at the same time, that says you might not be able to get there even if it's, even if you have your acre, you might not be able to get to five thousand.
What, list some reasons why you might not?
That's a reason for frontage or the, or the, uh.
Right, cause we do, we have that fifty-foot buffer, so if you've got a small lot.
Right, if it's a small lot, but then you've crammed all the way to one side, you just might not be able to fit it on.
Get three thousand or whatever it is, yeah.
Because you'd still need, you know, it to be a normal-looking thing, you know?
Yeah, that wording's gonna be interesting though.
Well, so it says something like, and still adhering to.
Yeah, and still, must adhere to setbacks and other bylaw requirements or something.
All other. Right, yeah, 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 that's it. That's it.
You can't put "normal-looking" in that term.
No, but I mean, like, cause there's some whacked-out shaped lots, like the Tajin lot, it's sort of this weird thing.
Oh, that's, yes, that's true.
And so it's long and skinny, but if he's gotta have frontage or, or, you know, setbacks on both sides, he might not be able to get, unless it's this really long and skinny building that's in the middle of the, you know? And it's just, you know, so they might not be able to get there.
Right, and they also have parking requirements as well.
Right, that's what I mean, you have to have the setbacks, you have to have the room for the parking, you have to have access.
Kind of like, and still adhering to, um, other bylaws like setback, including but not limited to setbacks, yada, yada.
Other requirements.
That's sort of implied about everything.
And, and it just indicates that you have to look at other things.
Right.
Right?
And, and I would just like it in the same place, cause a lot of times, like, people come in here, like, uh, what do you call it, the one across from the lighting plant said, well, I have this much property, I want my twenty-seven houses on it, you know? And, well, you can't fit it, half of it's wetlands, it's on a hill, there's nothing that you can do, it's not, you know, it's not doable, you know, and, and I just want them to not walk in here expecting, well, it says I can have five thousand.
But it doesn't.
Or whatever the number is.
Yeah, but it doesn't.
Well, that's, I can have five thousand, I can't be bigger than and I want my five thousand.
Just a reminder, this is one of the topics that they're gonna be discussing at Holy Cross on Saturday, is the Village Center zoning, I don't know if anybody from the board was gonna.
I was gonna attend, but I haven't registered yet, I hope they have.
Midnight tonight, on the thirteenth, it's, who was it, midnight on twelfth, so.
Today's, uh.
Signing now.
So it's the twelfth?
If nobody from the board goes, I'll try to see if I can get some.
I have no trouble crashing it.
I was gonna say, I bet, I'll bet, I bet they'll take your registration fee if you show up.
Just don't park there.
I'm gonna park at the Holy Cross Center here and get bussed over to.
And so the next couple of items are, are these things we want, I think, um.
Well. Food sales establishments, that's sort of a wide range.
Well, bakeries, including bakeries, I think it had.
I think we have to, cause Darby's is there.
Well, yeah, and it makes sense to have that, but I didn't want it to have, like, a McDonald's, which is a food, a restaurant.
Oh, well, I think we'll have to limit it a different way than saying no food.
But you could have.
Right, but that's why we.
You'd say no drive-through.
You could have a little restaurant, a little cafe or something, right?
Sure, could be lovely.
Lovely.
I would love to have a lovely little restaurant that I could walk to.
Okay.
With a, with a bar, maybe taxi style, that sounds great.
What about a, a Starbucks, would you want a Starbucks?
No.
It has to.
I mean, Starbucks is different than Dunk's, in fact, I can't even order at a Starbucks, probably.
Yeah, it has, it has to look tasteful, right?
And we don't have a large area there, it's only little lots.
Starbucks are small.
I would take Starbucks.
Bottom half.
Be well-used.
I think it's coming back.
That'll be well-used.
All right, and pharmacies, is there such a thing as a small pharmacy?
Not any longer.
Yeah, I can't imagine.
So that's one that I was thinking we made.
Used to be, and they were very nice.
Yeah, active. Yeah.
Cause you knew that, you knew everybody there, and now they're, now they're big stores.
Well, that little one. On, uh, in Beacon Hill, in Boston, just closed, right?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, really?
The, well, the guys are gone and the CVS has taken it over, I mean, they sell stuff, but like, that's the last little tiny thing I've ever, I've known of that was still in existence.
Of course, yeah.
Well, it used to. There used to be a pharmacy at the site across from Darby's.
Okay.
That used to be a town pharmacy.
Oh.
So you'd go, drive in.
Yep.
That's cool.
Nice.
Yeah, it was a great place.
Do, should we, and put in something about marijuana, like, no pharmacy is different than marijuana or something?
Well, I, marijuana is not gonna be, well, it's not currently allowed in the zoning for this because we're gonna write it, do we wanna write marijuana retail sales here, cause not a growth facility?
Are you talking, like, is medical marijuana considered a farm?
That's what I mean, just so it doesn't get confused with pharmacy.
No, that would be in our, it would be under regs for medical marijuana and it's not, those, we don't have the zone yet, so it wouldn't be included, or we, when we find it, we would, I wouldn't suggest.
Allowed in that zone. I would not suggest that.
Okay, then that's not complicated.
And so cafes, art galleries, a grocery store? I like the convenience store, not, a grocery store, I think of as like a big place.
Big.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
Like a bodega kind of thing? Like that, those little, I don't know, they call them bodega, it's like a little convenience store with all sorts of different things in it?
Right, a convenience store, right.
But it's about that size, but it's got more things.
Or like a, like a market, a small market.
Yeah, like.
Yeah.
What was the, Central Street Market, wasn't that?
Right, where they were the smoothie places now, where they used to have, like, the, there was the deli and the, um, they sold, like, the kind of prepared, yeah, it was central.
Okay, so number seven, small convenience store market, slash market.
Yeah.
Slash market, yeah.
I would eliminate number eleven and include that category at seven.
Do you wanna do something like non-chain, so they don't get another honey farms?
That is no honey farms.
Honey farms is not.
I know, it's no.
But you don't get another honey farms.
Well. But you think honey farms are gonna put in a three thousand or five thousand or three thousand square foot building?
I just think if they do, it's gonna be not as nice as a family-owned thing.
But how can we?
Oh, do they?
But how can we, how can we?
Oh, the whole thing, yeah, just pass it.
How can we state that to be fair? I mean, we'd all like to have an individual store, it's not a chain, but how do you enforce that?
Aren't there other? So Darby, correct me if I'm wrong, aren't there other things in this bylaw that talk about, like, how the places have to look, where they wouldn't be able to do their normal branding stuff, do you know what I'm saying? Like, so it kind of gets at it a different way.
Yeah, but the ZBA will grant them a variance for all that stuff, like you're just.
No, I mean, can't you say, like, non-chain or non?
I don't think we can say that.
Don't call it, no?
I don't think we can say non-chain.
Right.
Well, it would certainly be.
I don't think you can say that.
Owner must, owner must live above it?
That would be easier.
Possibly. So then offices, that's an easy one.
Yeah.
Low-traffic personal services, um, I, I threw in low-traffic just because. People talk about these nail salons that are just like a little quaint place, but someone I know on the.
Massage parlor's like in Florida.
All right, all right.
That's coming up later.
Yeah, yeah.
Personal services being.
I figured you'd be the first to mention that one.
Personal services, like the nails, end up being one person every fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
And if they've got three people doing nails, that's a lot of vehicles per hour. So.
Four.
That's why we're looking at.
Getting nails done.
Four times three.
Oh, four times three, twelve, once every five minutes.
Really, twelve.
Okay, so what's low-traffic, yeah.
Plus the people, plus the people who have to work there.
Yeah.
And that's one of the things when I was looking at our zoning, our zoning has uses for parking and we don't often, and we don't always have parking for, you know.
Yeah.
For good use.
Well.
Would definitely be barber, barber shops too, I mean, if you're not having a, a nail salon, then.
Well, as long as it's low-traffic is the idea.
But how do you define low-traffic?
Yeah, I think that's tough to define.
That's what we would take, CMRPC.
Right.
Okay.
Like Raj could get his haircut there.
Five minutes.
Then that's higher traffic, is if somebody comes in in five minutes.
More people.
More people coming in, yeah.
And taverns, is that something we want, you think people in that area of town wanna have a tavern?
I don't think so, I don't think they would.
I don't think so.
Uh, I was gonna spread.
I don't know, I mean, I'd like to be able to walk over to one, but you know.
But you were there.
I mean, that's a.
I think, right, but do you wanna have it next door?
No, I don't really, actually, so, yeah, that's, that's the rub, isn't it?
So that's the.
Well, but. Could there be, like, don't we have, like, the food sales, could there be, like, a little restaurant that has a liquor license?
A bar.
That isn't a tavern, but it's a, has a liquor ability?
Could be.
But if it's a small market, that's, why not, big, Darby's has this little seats outside.
Yeah, but that's what I mean, I mean, like, if you, if they wanted to serve.
Right, but they're not open till ten o'clock at night with music going and loud.
Right, so it's not a tavern, but I wouldn't limit it out liquor licenses for a restaurant, how's that?
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Would they be able to get above and beyond what the town allows for liquor licenses? Would this be a special, a special deal?
No.
No?
Okay.
I don't think so.
No, they would have to follow the same liquor licenses through the select.
So that you're talking about a full set, it's gonna be, it's gonna have a, like, on the bylaws, so.
Yeah, but it is, it, it, it would be out of, it would be out of.
Yeah, no, that's a state law.
It's a letter by the state.
Um, outdoor seating would be allowed, associated with the bakeries or whatever other m- market or whatever you wanna have there, cafes. So that's fine, but we would definitely wanna have enough parking for that seating.
Yep.
Is that a question, who has to create the parking for these?
Well, the thing that I keep seeing is that, okay, we have space there now, I wanna throw in two picnic tables or two nice little outdoor eating areas, but then they never add any spaces to the parking area.
That takes up a space.
And then we end up with traffic backwards.
Well, you have to, you have to include the outdoor seating along with the indoor seating.
That's kinda where I'm going, yes.
Can we put it in another street, Newton Street, perhaps?
Yeah, also self-parking in my front yard, like it, uh.
Yeah, up the, up the hill. Yeah.
So isn't the part of the point of this too, though, to have, like, it's supposed to be walkable and maybe there's sort of like a central parking area and you'd spot, park there and be, but if we're gonna make everybody get their own parking, doesn't that sort of defeat that?
Yeah. That's, well. Well, I agree that that's the idea of the Village Center Zone, but we don't have any place to put parking.
Yeah.
But somebody.
We don't have, yeah, I was gonna say, we don't really have it.
I can't see the town buying a lot and ripping a house down to put in parking.
Right.
Right, correct.
So that's why I didn't wanna write it in, cause I don't think we're gonna do that ever.
Right.
But it could be shared parking with the something next door or whatever.
They can park it at the village park and then walk. You have plenty of parking.
Yeah, but, but the idea is, is that I can't, I don't see it happening to have a municipal lot somewhere, a free municipal lot. And I don't think we're gonna be in the business of charging for parking.
That's a free parking lot.
Unless you take down the old white house and back a honey farm.
Yeah, yeah, but.
That's the only.
Would you, if this does go into effect, this village zoning, would this be something that you guys might, your folks would be hooked into as far as getting the bus service, WRTA?
That would be nice.
Oh, that would be nice.
Yes.
That'd be very nice.
They could probably drop, they could, people could probably park at the, where their, um, business center, where Schalter School is, cause I mean, the school doesn't operate on Saturdays and Sundays, so maybe they could park there and then just be, and there's a bus.
Well, that's actually.
Yeah.
I think the bus comes down, goes to Walmart first and kinda turns around and starts going back to Wester.
But I don't know if people are gonna park.
So they would go to Walmart parking, so, but yeah, either ways, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Maybe. Maybe.
That could be tough.
Cause at one time I understand that the bus, there used to be a bus service throughout the whole town.
You'd, you'd have to, you'd have to have a lot, you had to have frequent service for that, I don't think people are gonna wanna do that. Park outside of walking business.
Not, not, not only that, you know, WRTA is not doing fantastic, they are cutting a lot of services, even in bigger places like in Mostert, other places. At least, you know, we are lucky enough to get one bus to West Boydstown.
Would it be possible to use the bus that the, uh, the senior center has?
That's for the special, special thing.
Yeah.
But again, it's only for, doesn't get.
But, but there's, there's nothing there now that would attract that number of people, you'd have a special bus, so this would have to.
Yeah. The, the rider.
It's a long-term plan.
The ridership is very, very low.
It's low, even at Walmart, it's low.
Because of Uber, Uber and other things are there, so the ridership is very low, they are cutting a lot of budget.
I remember at the last WRTA presentation that we went to for CMRPC, that's what they were saying, a lot of routes were being cut and we, ours was being preserved because of this ridership, yeah, but I mean, it's not, it, it didn't sound like it was something they wanted to expand.
One bus.
Right.
Right.
Yep, okay, okay. The next one was banks. Initially, it is said, one with a drive-through for a bank, anytime you do a drive-through, that just adds a lot of parking, a lot of driving and places where you don't expect it, so I'm just thinking, banks could have a walk-up, but no drive-through.
I agree.
Medical clinic, I guess, I mean.
Those, well, okay, but those tend to be.
Larger space.
Larger also, if you think about the Ready Med or the.
Yeah, we need a larger space.
The Quickie Mart, medical place, I think they would want a larger space.
Right. Right, and I wasn't sure what Dr. Tajin was doing, whether that could be a veterinary clinic.
Even if you ought to put in three rooms, you know, it's a lot of space.
Right.
I don't know.
Well, yeah, is some of the, are we meant to be sure to cover all the things that are already exist in this proposed center?
But he's been gone for over two years, so it's not my grandfather.
Well, yeah, 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 not for that, um, but there's the, there's a dentist and a chiropractor, right, and that, isn't that part included right now, so those are.
Yeah, that's offices.
Medical facilities, or are they offices?
Personal services, that's personal services, I think.
Sure, we'll go with that.
His vet, his vet hospital is here.
It's what?
Vet hospital, you know, Dr. Tajin, it's for sale.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
It's on the market.
Right, good luck.
So it all depends on, you know, what kind of a business goes in there.
How much? Maybe we could have a municipal parking lot.
Well, that's where, that's where I would put one, honestly, right?
Right, that's a good one, and it's a weird-shaped thing, probably ideal for a parking lot, but nothing much else.
Right, right.
But that would alleviate, I mean, if it was possible, that would alleviate what Vinnie was saying about as far as parking, cause that would be.
On that side, twelve.
That would be a central parking place and people could just walk that whole area.
Yeah.
And not have anything worry, cause you'd probably get forty or fifty cars in there.
Yeah, I don't know, but, I, but, but you could certainly get a number of them, that would. We could put a nicer, nicer fence along the back between it and that house, it looks like.
Google, Google Maps does it all.
Fitness centers?
Yeah, fitness.
Well, there is a fitness center in that.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking more of a personal trainer size, cause I, fitness center, I think that's Planet Fitness or Bally's or big spaces.
Well, I think, again, you know, we're, we're limiting things right on, by the, how big it can be for the acreage, right?
Ultimate obstacles.
What about yoga?
I don't know how big these spaces usually are.
By what?
Is this more?
Yoga, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, personal trainer, personal, again, that's personal services, yoga.
Maker spaces?
Hey, there we go.
What is that?
Maker spaces.
Maker space is like a.
What is it?
It's kinda like a membership machine shop.
Yeah.
Right.
So you can come in and you can use the, you don't have to have all your tools, they'll have welders and saws and everything like that and you can go and do your projects.[1633.12] So you can come in and you can use the, you don't have to have all your tools, they'll have welders and saws and everything like that and you can go and do your projects. Well, who knows, people, it might be just useful for people is.
Well, what would that be called that might fit into this?
It might be per- fitness or personal.
Specifically, I don't think it's a personal fitness thing.
It's not personal fitness, they have personal service.
It's, uh, I don't know.
Artist live workspace?
Well, it's kind of.
If you take out the artist, it's just live workspace, then it works.
It's possible, I don't know if that gets us into trouble with something else, but we can ask. All right, and then, uh, everything else seems similar, assembly halls, funeral homes, all the exciting things for town. Then it talked about bed and breakfast, up to twelve units, that seemed like an awful lot, I was thinking six.
There was a war hotel.
And then. And then what do we do about Airbnbs? Are those even allowed in town?
Do we have any, well, okay, are Airbnbs allowed in town? We don't have any rules against the report.
How could you keep somebody from putting their?
Right.
If it's a single residence district, it's a single residence, it's not allowed.
Yeah, but the Airbnb stays a single residence.
That's right.
But it's not a rental unit, I mean, you can rent the whole house.
That's what it is.
I'm just saying, I don't thi- I, I mean, are we like?
I don't know.
That's what I've done, just rented the whole house.
Yeah, you can rent the whole house, but if you're living in it, it's an Airbnb and you're living there and it's got a room that you're renting out, it's like a spare room, that's more use than a single residence district, that's not a single residence.
That's true.
The whole house, I think you could still do.
Yeah, you can always rent your whole house out, right.
I mean, are we, are we gonna be in the business of looking after that?
It will be soon, I think, it's happened in Boston, they've done a bunch of things.
Had a problem because they found that most of the Airbnbs were not owner occupied.
Yeah.
That people would buy these, uh, houses or condos for the purpose of renting them out Airbnb, and that's not, that's.
That's not the purpose.
That's how I'm gonna retire.
Is it?
Yeah, making money on that Airbnb.
Nice deal, well, the other thing I was looking at is, okay, you do an Airbnb or some other rental, you need to have the parking. So you don't end up with a house, two parking spaces, and then someone moving in or using it as an Airbnb, someone parking out in the street, so there needs to be adequate parking if that's gonna be there.
Yep.
So we can work that in. Assisted living facilities and daycare facilities.
Yes, by you.
That seems like a bigger facility.
Big, yeah.
Seems bigger.
Adult daycare, like a senior center?
Right.
You think it'd be bigger? You, you don't think people would, could make money with that with a smaller place?
That's why I'm asking the question.
I think again, we're, I mean, we're so, we're limiting by how big it can be, right, overall, that's gonna naturally.
That's gonna narrow, that's gonna actually narrow it down.
Yep.
Where that type of business wouldn't be attracted to that area anyway.
That's right. But if somebody did wanna have like us, I mean, I, you know, cottage industry, um, adult daycare starts to become popular and maybe that would be okay.
And actually, I'm not sure we can, 'cause we just have the legal, is a question, a legal question about having a childcare facility in a single residence district, actually, I think, well, it's a single residence district, and
Where?
There, allow.
Oh.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say, I'm in.
Supersedes everything, the state says, even though we, our town bylaws is only a family daycare, which is up to six.
Yeah, but it's, nothing is there, you know.
Nothing's there now.
I wouldn't go there now.
Right, no, we, but it's a state thing, we may not even be able to do adult daycare either, so we gotta look into that.
Parking, biking and pedestrian facilities, what does that mean?
That was included in there, I wasn't sure, I mean, use one of the lots for parking for, uh.
You have bike racks and stuff?
Is that what they mean, yeah?
I think bike racks, yeah, so it's got the, the use.
Right, pedestrian facilities meaning benches or something or?
Yeah, I was hesitant to put in like a public restroom building.
Right.
Like a visitor's center or something like that.
We have to be big for that to be happening.
Can even take care of the buildings that we go into every day.
I mean, if we start to have a, a bunch of really cool businesses and there's a ton of people and people are peeing on other people's lawns, then maybe we'll look at that.
Okay.
Right? Um, allowed through granting a special permit by the planning board, this is where I wasn't exactly sure, um, why two family homes comes in here is needing a special permit, whereas in the regular part, they can have up to twelve rooms in a, in, it doesn't make a lot of sense, so.
Right.
It doesn't.
I was looking, I, that's what made me start thinking, what do we really wanna have for special permits? Uh, a liquor store, do we wanna have a liquor store, do we wanna have a uh, market that also sells beer and wine, I mean, is that, 'cause I, they can do that, there's only so many liquor licenses in town, I don't know how that all works, but I'm almost thinking we scratch this whole special permit thing and just go with what we set up above for these are the uses that are allowed.
Think that makes more sense.
I mean, I'd rather keep this as simple as possible, I was trying to cut it down.
I think.
You didn't highlight a permit complexes.
I think in general that makes sense.
'Cause that's really what it is, but, yeah, so, yeah, is that?
I think that general, I, I, I think that makes sense.
Okay, so that's the way I'll kinda word it, 'cause I think, like, it's, in the purposes, to build upon the existing development patterns to create attractive, walkable neighborhoods, that's encourage adaptive reuse of abandoned sites, allow mixed land uses, provide incentives to improve existing properties, uh, do we wanna, that was, I didn't notice that, and the third, fourth bullet, bullet, improve existing, this is on page one, improve existing properties and develop larger group properties. Uh, do we wanna encourage development of larger group properties, we wanna keep it more small?
Well, it'd be interesting.
I think the town residents would like to keep it small.
That's what I heard. So, and develop standards.
Instead of somebody buying it for lots and.
Raising all the houses and then putting something, because then we have our, oh, well, look, now we've got three acres and so four acres and now I can build this giant, now I can put my grocery store.
Because these lots are gonna be so small and you wanna bring businesses and kinda, you know, make it the decor, would it, do you know if there would be any kind of federal, state or grants that would be available to help these people to, you know, get started as far as, you know? Do you know of any on the top, if anybody else?
No one's come up or said anything about grants with these village centers.
Grants for a small business to start up?
Yeah, you know, because it's, it's a new, a new thing, it's a village zoning center, a village zoning, uh, village center. So I'm just, you know, a lot of times there's, there's places that have, you know, like, like, if you buy one of those dilapidated homes in Worcester or any other, you know, the state and the federal government will give you some money to help you, you know, to decorate it.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just asking a question, that's, that's all, I'm just wondering if that's, if it might be something available, 'cause that, if there is, or if it was, that might entice people more to come in and do something, you know, take a building in, in the center of town that's, you know, might need a lot, might need some work, and they don't wanna put all their money, but if they can get some help from the, you know, from the federal or the state government, you know, or even a grant to help them do that, that would, I think that would be an enticement.
That's a question for CMR PC.
Yeah, well, that's actually down the road, we gotta get it in place first and then move from there.
Okay, what else we got?
Um, the other big one was on page, bottom of page three, item eleven. It talked about prohibition, prohibited uses, prohibition against nuisances. That's such a hard thing to define and to deal with, I tried to.
But I know it when I see it.
Right.
Well, yeah.
But you may not believe it, you can say it's a nuisance, but other people don't.
Supreme Court's definition.
Yes, yes.
Right, so what I wanna do is try to add, uh, this item eleven, uses which are not listed, but may reasonably be considered to create a nuisance.
Without listing them?
Right. Well, limiting.
Let's start listing all the nuisances.
List the nuisance standards, which, so I was, I intended to scratch out, um, down to creates on this next line down. So, consider, in the yellow, to be considered to create, and then scratch the end of that line all the way down to almost the end of this next line and say a nuisance to a butters or to the surrounding area or which creates any hazard, blah, 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 and all the other stuff.
Yep.
So just rephrase that.
That seems good, I like that.
And that's as far as I got, three asterisks are as far as I made it.
All right, I will.
Thank you for the input, we will.
I will let you know if I, if I have anything else also. Um, thank you, Vinnie. Site plan review spreadsheet, oh, yeah, this one, uh, to answer your question, the committee has not met anytime recently.
Okay.
Uh, so this.
Has it met, or has anyone talked to George now that George is in place or the building inspector?
No.
Okay, so we could, I.
As far as I know.
So I'm thinking we can create this list with a little bit of time, working on it, looking at it, maybe we can get feedback, if you have questions when we look through it, I can answer those tonight, but then try to look at it and see which ones appear to be higher priorities than others.
So this list, I believe, from looking at the non-consecutive numbers,
Yes.
Was after we had the last meeting where we took a whole bunch of things off.
Yes.
And I was here, okay.
Yeah, so it's try, I'm trying now to.
Yeah, this is trimmed down from the, where it used to be.
Right.
So you said.
I think you're missing a page in here.
That's it.
No. Yeah.
Oh, right, okay, no, I guess it's there, yep. The numbers are all there, it's, it works.
Do you have time to review that tonight, do this tonight?
If you guys, yeah, people have, yeah, open to get comments or you can send them to me electronically and we can talk about them at the next meeting. But the building inspector would be willing to meet with us, he said he wants to, he'd rather coordinate and talk about things and work together on issues.
'Cause a lot of you say no response from building inspector.
Well, that was a prior one, yes. A prior two maybe.
Yeah, so, yeah, we could, we could, yes, we should have George come in and we could go with these with him, and he may be able to give us an update about, yeah, I dealt with that, or no, I didn't deal with that, or I didn't know that, or.
Right, well, what I'd like to do is have us kinda come up with the plan of these, and then we send it to George when we all kinda look at it and say, yeah, that makes sense, and then when he, when we're really, 'cause some of these might resolve themselves and others might just never resolve themselves, like the Fuller site, the U-Haul vehicle stuff, I mentioned it to him when I saw him, so he's sent and take a look at it, but.
I think he's trying to get them out and they're just not leaving as fast as he would like.
Two months.
Yeah, but still, I think that's some sort of business thing.
I know, but it's two months.
Is that, is that on?
Pay excise tax on that, that's fine too.
Is that, is that on here?
That's what I think his problem is, he has, he wants nothing to do with it, and they won't just take it away, you know?
Right.
Okay.
That's the impression I get from him though.
I'll look at my notes.
That he's trying to get it out of his system.
Yeah.
I still have that sheet with my notes on it, so I could.
Okay.
Is that the same list that the chair, um, committee is playing at too?
Yes.
So what, what do, uh, we want from us?
Take a look at it, does it make sense, are you, if, ones that you're aware of, are there other ones that are not listed, I mean, some of them are.
Right, so, no, Vinnie, I'm new to this, so I'm gonna say that you guys, that a good list together.
Just take a look, 'cause some of them are, like, um.
I hate that ninety-two North Main Street sign, I hate that.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I don't think it meets the zoning either, so.
Well, I have, uh, uh.
What's that?
It does, it was approved by the ZB, it is, the forty B project is older than, older than Bowdoin.
So you can have an annoying, really bright sign in a residential area?
Nobody's complained, I've asked the chief, I've asked the police department, nobody's complained.
I've complained.
I, I think it's terrible, the neighborhood, it doesn't fit the neighborhood at all.
Cheryl knew some complaints.
Right, they went straight to us.
Well, they've, they're complaining to the wrong people, that's the problem, they, there's two people, there's two, two entities that they should be complaining to. The ZBA, it's a forty B project and the police department, and I've checked with the police department.
The police department?
Yes, because that's what people would be calling, they'd say, oh, you know, blah, 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 and I, I, I've talked to the police and they said they didn't have no complaints about people talking about that sign.
George is the zoning enforcement officer.
Well, I think that's.
I'm not sure we're gonna get anywhere on that one, yeah, there is a, there is a very flexible allowance in the permit.
Okay, well, if somebody called the police and said, that light's shining in my bedroom window all night, what are they gonna do? Who are they gonna call? The police can't do anything about it.
Well, they could, again, I'm sure you could lower the intensity.
No, no, but who are they gonna call?
Somebody in the town.
Who?
Town administrator, for the selectmen.
There's, there's no, there's no, yeah, well, right, it, it, it.
I understand what you're saying, but the thing is, what people have to understand is that on the forty B, everything else goes out the window. That's a whole separate entity.
I understand, okay. Okay, so we'll all take a look at this and have, send any comments in to Vinnie?
All right, and if you see something else that hasn't been listed.
Yeah, like the, uh, is the, uh, seafood place sign on here?
Seafood place sign?
Yeah, it's too, oh, it's too bright, it's too bright.
That's a compliance.
It's too bright.
That's compliant.
Yeah.
It's too bright.
Oh, too bright?
No, I think it's too bright.
It's too bright.
Too bright?
Well, there's a couple of, it has different screens and there's.
When it goes on the white screen, it's very bright, it's very dis- it's distracting to me when I drive down the street.
There's a.
We just need to call, I mean, the first thing is if we notice that we should just call and say, it's too bright, can we?
Does the building inspector have a?
A nitmeter?
No. It costs too much money.
Remember when I mentioned it about the ski place and their sign, they had a, a red thing and it was like intense, and they dialed it way down and I think it's, they, they've got it to.
A lot of those folks, and I, I mean, I think everybody would, if they get a call, turn it down, I mean, it's.
Or adjust it to.
At least the ones that change, I'm not sure the ninety-two north, that just is one sign that doesn't change, it might be more difficult to do it. But the ones that are adjustable in the new, whatever the sale is this week, I think they can do it and they're.
That sign in ninety-two North Main Street, we brought that up to the developer and he said that his engineer had gone out there, electrical engineer had gone out there, and it, what, it met the criteria, it met, it was within the limits, so, I mean, I don't know what else can be done about it, I mean, if an engineer is saying that it's, it's within the limits, I mean, I don't understand what that termination is as far as, you know.
Certain number of feet away, certain number of limits.
There's no way that conforms.
Specific purpose named for that brightness, and according to, you know, the developer, the engineer said that that would have been the limits.
That could be, and, and.
It would be interesting to see the response from the engineer.
And it's too, and it's too bright for that neighborhood, even if it meets the zoning, it's too bright for that neighborhood, in my opinion.
It probably doesn't have the, like, that, that type of sign doesn't have the, whatever, coverage.
It's a white light.
No, I know, but it doesn't have the coverage light, like one of the lights we talk about when you can't have spill over, which are, they have a, a zone that they'll light up. It's not that kinda sign, so it probably doesn't talk about it that well.
No, it's not, that's for lighting, that's not for signs, there is something in the bylaw, but I don't know what the ones are.
Okay, so.
The Kendall Powers?
I'm sorry, did a member of the board say something? Are you suggesting something to the chairman? Did we go to new business? I heard you, new business, thank you.
Nothing.
Yeah. Review of correspondence and emails, uh, so Steve is gonna pay his bill?
Sounds like it.
I thought that was a nicely worded and response, good job, Paul.
All right, so, well, I think we just, you know, once he knew we discussed it, uh, email, anything else? No, nothing else.
Why isn't there more going on this week? I think we had a whole bunch of people with applications.
No, that's next week, that's next time.
Are they next? April, right?
Oh, really? Nobody on the twenty-seventh?
No, I don't know, will they have their answers anyway because?
I think we should have canceled this meeting today.
Concom is gonna meet on the twenty-first, so it'll be before hours.
I don't think we should ever cancel meetings.
Reports from other boards? Reports from other boards, anybody?
Nope.
Is Bush Jackson gone?
Yep.
Oh, God, this place is, ship run around, a captain and a main, whatever, engine guy.
We gotta, I gotta get that transportation committee meeting to meet again, I'll be.
That's probably what's driving them off.
Up to poke somebody. So what?